Good morning. Welcome to the Logan County Board of Commissioners. Today is May 15th, 2018. It is 9:00 a.m. Please rise from the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item 3, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none. Item 4, consideration of possible action on approving minutes of May 7th, 2018.
I make a motion we approve.
Aye, a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes without objection. Number 6, oh, excuse me, number 5, open seal bids, 2018-20. One fire apparatus body for cash and fire department in consideration of possible action on awarding said bid.
We received bids from Chief Fire and Safety Blanchett in emergency fire equipment.
It's like skinning a fish. Forty-two, four ninety-two, seventy. Much too far.
Can you check and make sure all the other things are handled? Hand them in the way and pump them, please. We just need to make sure. We had a couple of bits approved up on the floor and then...
This wasn't in our own gym glove.
That's fine. It's sealed.
Okay.
It's sealed.
Just checking.
It is sealed.
What do you mean?
And labeled. It is labeled.
Do we have a representative? We don't have anybody from Cash here.
No, and with that in mind, the board may want to consider tableings so they have a chance to look at them.
If you want to look at any of these, you can.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So this is one bid here. Troy, did this have any, was this just a straight-up bid or...?
Let me explain to you what it is. Cash and Fire Department is supplying a 2018 Ford F-350 DRW chassis to have this fire apparatus built and applied to. So this is just the back part of the truck. They are supplying the truck separately.
No options. It's just...
Okay. Okay, so...
The specs were all drawn out as to, what was it? The tank sizes and stuff that were in the specs.
Okay. Emergency fire equipment bid, forty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy cents.
And there's their business affidavit. Okay.
Boy, what the... Cheap, forty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars. Okay. So... Unless the board breaks with tradition and wants to go ahead and award this without the folks looking at it.
Obviously, they looked at it.
Yeah. I'm looking too. All right. We need to read this one.
Yeah.
Are we fancy? Troy, they have all of the...
They have their affidavits. I think you're going to find their bid sheet more towards the front. In a minute. Here they are.
Come on in, fellas.
Sorry, we're late.
We're right with you. Yeah, we just... Okay. And this is Blanchett Manufacturing. Their bid is sixty-six thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars. We had one from Emergency Fire for forty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars, and one from, what's the other one we had? One from Chief, and it was...
You guys want to look at these?
Yeah, we'll give them to you here in just a second.
I know you, this is a new process for you all. So you can look at these here.
Forty-four thousand, if I remember right.
You can ask the board to recommend it, to award it today if you want to look at them and do that, or you can ask that the board table it until the 31st at their next meeting so that you can get copies and have everyone evaluate. So those are kind of your options right now. Usually tabling so you can have everyone look at them, but you can't take these originals from here. We'll have to get your copies made.
That much. And Chief Fire and Safety was forty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars. You can look at all of these. Like I said, don't take them with you. So if you guys want to review those, you've got to make the selection today. We'll take action on it today if you don't. Okay. So, I think, is intercede a motion to table item 6 until our next meeting?
Yeah, I made a motion. I'll say it.
Okay. Have a motion and a second.
I don't think you even need a motion.
We don't need a table. Yeah, okay. So items tabled until next meeting, 31st. Item 7, consideration of possible action on approving service agreement with Clean Uniform Company for District 2.
Item 6.
6. Oh, I did? Sorry. Oh, it's a sealed bid as well. That's why I did it. Okay. Open seal bid, 2018-21. Resurface Pine Street beginning at Waterloo Road continuing north, Charter Oak Road. Resurface Simmons beginning at Pine Street continuing to Kitty Hawk Lane. Consideration of possible action on 2, award said bid.
We have three that were submitted. TJ Campbell, Haskell Lemon, and Atlas Green.
Thank you. Just three, haven't I?
Yes. There was, and... Those three plus Bishop were the ones that attended.
There were three options on this bid.
I need to look at the...
Haskell Lemon, option 1 was two hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars. Option 2, three seventy-nine, one thirty-six. Option 3, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Okay. And I've got...
What was the different options?
Uh, the different options is the depth of asphalt.
Was y'all milling anything in?
I'm sorry?
Was they milling the beginnings and stuff?
Milling. They were milling it and they were fixing the failures in there, and then they come back and pay. So, I'll just reading it. All right, well, option 1 for...
The options, just so it was clear, on option 1 it was for 2-inch. Option 2 is 3-inch, and option 3 was 4-inch.
Just to have, 220 on option 1 from Atlas. 309 is 2 miles plus, about 750. 22 feet wide, so 3, 4, or 2, 3, and 4 inches, I doubt if I go with 2. Three hundred nine thousand for option 2, and four hundred thousand for option 3. What'd you say on this? Two ninety-three, three seventy-nine, forty-four. And that's from Haskell Lemon. And... Look at here, all right? This would be TJ Campbell is option 1, two thirty-nine, eight, three thirty-three, two for 3 inches then. Three ninety-three, five hundred for 4 inches. So we're going to have two.
Table it.
Take a look at it. Put it on the menu for the 31st. So it's going to table. All right. Item 6 is tabled until 31st. Item 7, consideration of possible action on approving service agreement with Clean Uniform Company for District 2.
Yeah, we're changing uniform companies. This Clean is offering same services for half the amount, but a lot more diversity in the type of clothing they could have. They're putting in writing they won't raise it's more than 5% per year. Last one raised it's almost twice. And we get the Logan County District 2 logo on them, which we could, we're supposed to be getting from Centos, but never have gotten. It's just a lot better service the year-round and half the amount of money. So I make the motion and we accept. Clean Uniform Company has the contractor for uniforms with District 2.
I'll say it. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 8, consideration of possible action on approving, on resolution appointing requisition of officers, none?
None for 8 or 9.
None for 8 or 9. Okay. Makes it easy. Item 10, consideration of possible action on approving the following temporary road crossing permits for H2 Services LLC. Parallel, or cross parallel West County Road 631, 8 miles west of North Meridian, 660 west of northeast corner of 27-19 north and 4 west. I don't know where that's at.
Right about where those earthquakes are.
I think so. Have a motion to approve.
Exactly.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 10, consideration of possible action on consent agenda.
Sign this here, too.
I think with the, all three, that's why I put the stamp on your bid. All right, consent. Here's payroll.
Okay. While we're doing this, I just wanted to mention that Sheriff Damon Deveros represented the county well in Washington, DC at the memorial they had one there. Fortunately, he had to be there for two of them. Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, is right. Dedication to two of our fallen deputies. So the county election board's in the hall? Or that's just printed with red ink?
Just, yeah, the way it prints.
They were buried in the old... Back in the old days, everything that was printed in blue ink was good, and everything printed in red ink was not so good.
They tried to change it because it hurt the kids' feelings if it was too red.
Oh, yeah, red ink pens. My English teacher wore about three of them out of my stuff.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda items.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to point out the election board's not in the red.
Okay, we have numbers, we're just printing red.
Yeah.
All right. So a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Item 12, consideration of possible action on approving claims for payment by 2018. You put the...
Well, I just, you know, want to make it clear.
There's been thousands of people coming to see me over here.
Uh, yes, they do. Speaking of expenditures, I just wanted to report back to the board. Y'all approved around 70, what was it, $72,000 for striping for some of our roads that we had out of CBRI, and that came in. The actual cost was closer to $38,000, so it was about just a little over half of what we asked for by the time they got the paint on the ground.
This is the kind of compliance.
I see. There's another one.
There's kind of a changeover in a reorganization and kind of threw some things off.
I see. Got to part this off, dude. Stuff happens. $141,000 off on that one, Marvin. Did you get your new stamp?
No, actually, that's part of the new Pro software upgrade.
Okay.
That if, if it's all turned in, so we're encumbering it at one time, there's a place we can mark it so it prints when the PO's printed. The others are what we don't know till they're turned in and audited, so we have to stamp them.
A little bit. You're helping. Nice pass. Heavy one. I can't stay for the quarterback just to bring that in.
Is that it, Troy?
That's it.
I'll make a motion we approve the claim in a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes without objection. Number 13, any citizen desiring to be heard? Hearing none. Comments and announcements questions by the Board of County Commissioners?
I would like to remind the board, if we're going to do anything on the EMS outside of the districts that we have, we have to have it to the election board if we're going to put something on the ballot by August 22nd. So if we're going to do it, we need to get the question or the language written up and have it ready to go.
So along those lines, we have submitted a language template to Lowell. He's working on that, and should get that back to us hopefully in the next 30 days anyway. He's been kind of busy with some other stuff. He's been piling on his plate. He's been doing a good job of getting stuff kicked back to us, but be about 30 days, I think, we'll have something we can present to the board to look at, and then as long as you guys want to take to review it, and then we'll vote on it.
I just don't want the fall of the...
Yeah, August 22nd. I got it. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Other than that, I don't have any more comments or announcements.
Mike, you're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. I did have, I've got one item. It has to do with agenda item we had last time with ODOT, right? So I took an action to have Lowell look at the agreement with ODOT, and...
That'll be a contingency lawsuit.
Draft a contingency paragraph, and that's this item, paragraph 5-3. In the actual agreement, there's a 5-1 and a 5-2, so he's basically added this 5-3. And it's, I've read through it. You guys are welcome to read through it. Attached to that is the correspondence between Lowell and myself, Mike earlier with Lowell, and so everybody kind of knows where we're coming from on this. The one thing I did want to point out, and there's section 5-1 talks about the cost, the total estimate, construction cost being $33 million, and that the, they're going to pick up, ODOT's going to pick up $28 million of that, and then they did their fuzzy math and came up with a difference of $5.5 million, which it's actually only $5 million. Troy caught that as a mistake. So our part of that would be 2.5 million instead of 2.75 million. So Troy, appreciate you keeping an eye on that. So we're going to, we're going to ask that ODOT change those numbers to reflect the true numbers there in item, section 5-1, and then to add section 5-3 to this agreement. And what Lowell has said is we don't have to change the resolution, because basically the resolution says that we're approving the... the resolution says that we're approving the agreement. So, if we get the agreement changed, then the, the resolution's still good.
We're still having to send this off though, Don?
No, I wanted, I wanted to bring this to you guys this morning and make sure that we're still in agreement, that that's, I, I wanted reassurance that from our last meeting, I, I thought that's what we had agreed to and what you guys wanted me to do, and so, unless there's any objection, we're, we're gonna send this to ODOT for them to change their contract and then send it back to us for our review on our, at our meeting on the thirty-first.
Our review in action. I begin with you, if I'm opportunity.
That's the whole thing, right?
Well, and that's it, we're gonna go to ACOG, this is three entity request, that probably holds a little weight. You know, I, I think we ought to be able to get some of the federal funding to extend that project to center and over the pine. It didn't need to be contingent.
So, this, this language also, to point out, this language also convinced the county to changing our cert five-year plan to make this our first priority for next year.
Yeah, and the way we discussed that was we have three point two million over there on Luther Road at this particular time. We're estimating anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand for ride away and for moving utilities and such, I don't know if we're getting help with that or not, it'll probably be under seven fifty. And meantime, I'll recreate, phase that Luther Road so we can get some bridges done in there, and then contingent on what ODOT decides to do with SERV. Maybe we can go ahead and get that two miles paved, maybe a year later or something, we'll see how it all works out.
So, Mike, I just need you to understand that what this is saying is that the, the two point five million dollars will be the number one priority on our five-year plan is, is what we're committed to do.
Yeah, okay, not SERV though.
Yes, C R B.
That's the way you have it written up?
That's the way we agree. If, if you don't want to do that, then we, we don't have anything to agree on.
Well, we're gonna have to get ACOG funds.
That's what this says too.
Right, yeah.
I thought in the last meeting we agreed, or you agreed you was gonna change some stuff, that this is gonna be the SERV project.
Yes, so I have SERV money going on, but now whether that's gonna be the whole ten and a half million or whatever like that, I don't think that's gonna happen.
We have to get funding for ACOG, we'd use ACOG.
We, we have to get some funding from ACOG, or the whole deal is not going to work, I think. Unless we can get some SERV money from you guys, get some projects from you to go on there.
So, I, I don't think you understand what I'm saying.
I see.
What it, what it said, what this says is when we reconvene for, to do our SERV five-year plan, the county will make this our number one priority for SERV funding, the county will.
That's all of us working together to make sure this is funded.
That's what we're gonna do.
Okay.
That wasn't my understanding, hold on, but it'll get, get the thing progressing, but right now they're only needing seven hundred and fifty thousand off.
Okay, I'll, I'll send this to, to ODOT, see if we can get them to change theirs, and then we can discuss whether or not we want to approve it at our meeting on thirty-first.
Is there a contingent on ACOG funds? I don't think so.
Well, we don't have to...
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
But I mean, we, we need to get it sent over, ODOT said they're willing to change it, and if you don't like the funding, we'll just kick it out.
Yeah, it's all contingent. All right. I will entertain a motion on item fifteen.
Can move, we adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.